Welcome everybody to the Glen County Mainland Planning Commission for Monday, October 2nd. We're going to start with the invitation in the head, if you'd like to join us, please stand up. Let us break.
Father God, we want to thank you so much. Father, we are grateful for those who lives were taken and injured in that national shooting in most places. We thank you, Father, for those who are serving our own courses. Anyone who may come in, we pray God for the decision that we make today, how that he gives us what he deserves, all that we can be asking of Jesus.
Let us begin this with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If you have any cell phones or batteries on at this time, if you wish, we can turn them down or off, appreciate it. First thing we're going to do is review the meeting procedures. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side, and five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Thomas, if there are any delinquents to relevant information regarding your position, you should avoid being repetitive. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the panel, and how to cooperate in this process, it would be greatly appreciated. Mr. Sebastian, you can explain the commission corrections.
Nothing.
And just go into your seat. Gentlemen, it is approved of minutes of regular meeting held at lot 88, 2017, subject to any necessary corrections. I can only give you the paper. All motion and protest. Discussion, correction. All members, you can sign the raise your right hand. Six and one six. Public hearing, conditional use permits. First item, CUP 3565, 106 Shoppers Way. Consider request for conditional use permit for adult daycare in general commercial zoning district located within a portion of Good Place Commercial Park, 106 Shoppers Way. Parcel IDs, portion of 03-10546, 03-11408. Robert Driggers, Driggers Commercial Group, AP, DC, E, Shopping Center LLC owner and applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This first application is located again at 106 Shoppers Way, which is adjacent to the mall at the corner of Shoppers Way and Mall Boulevard. Here's an aerial photograph of the site. It is a currently developed site. These are images looking at the buildings that are currently on the site, the view from Mall Boulevard at the top, and the view from Shoppers Way down below. The area of the property is just over two acres, and they are asking for this conditional use permit for the suite, which is just under 3,800 square feet. It is owned general commercial, and they are proposing an adult daycare here. We'll convert the former gym and rehab facility to this adult daycare, and we'll also include a kitchen, ADA compliant restrooms, activity rooms, and offices for staff. This is the information that is required to be submitted with a conditional use permit. You can see they have ample parking in front of the property. They have ample access to the property from Shoppers Way, which is connecting Mall Boulevard and Scranton Connector. It's in a retail area, so the surrounding property uses are compatible with the use that is requested. These are the criteria to be considered with any conditional use permit application, and staff does feel that the request is in keeping and will not have a detrimental effect or impact on any of the areas or surrounding uses. They have ample access, they have ample parking, open space is not required, nor is screening for a project like this, consistent hours, and manner of operation with surrounding uses, and again, compatibility with this land use in the surrounding area. These are your possible motions, and staff does recommend that the planning commission recommend approval to the board commissioners for this application. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for this act?
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to move forward and request action, please? And third, please state your name and address.
Sure. Robert Driggers, Driggers Commercial Group, and I'll just answer any questions you have. I think Ms. Grabowski covered it very well. It's a very simple use for a multi-tenant, little commercial development. It's surrounded by other commercial activity, and the use seems to be a good one. It will actually upgrade this facility. This particular suite's been sitting empty for several years, so this will be an upgrade, I think.
There was an absence this weekend, and then there is a shopping center, it's probably the size of a little run through mall, or at least half the size of a main by some out here, and it was taken over completely by the
Okay. Good. Adaptive reuse.
And they are very busy on the weekend.
Sure.
I think we're going to see a lot of reuse about that.
Absolutely.
Any questions, Mr. Calloway?
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this conditional use permit? Same none? Anyone wishing to speak? Same none? Commissioner?
Motion.
And motion is second. Any statement? All in favor of the motion, signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you very much.
He didn't vote against the decision.
Okay, second item, conditional use permit. CUP 3589, Coastal Georgia RV Resort. Consider request for a conditional use permit for the expansion of existing RV Resort Park in Glen Development Zoning District. Space proposed for use consists of approximately 5.6 acres, 311 South Wall Parkway, and is located south of and in between the existing Coastal Georgia RV Resort. Parcel ID 02-00672, keeps surrounded by water underground, D, Coastal Georgia RV Resort LLC owner and owner. Any comments?
I have not spoken with Mr. Schonauer, so I'm not sure why he's not here, because I know he normally would be.
Would you like to move forward?
Do you want to table this, and we can see if he pushed it to the end? Okay. Okay.
Being a different use permit to public hearing, I feel like I need to be here.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Next item, an appeal. Is this a
This is a little bit unusual, because normally an expedited subdivision does not come before the planning commission, but because this is an appeal from a staff denial, the process is for that appeal to come before the planning commission.
But it's not considered a public
No, sir. No, sir. It's not a public hearing.
Should we be going forward with this, sort of, the other half of the, I might complain, the other half of the story, which is directed at Thompson's, not here? And she's the one that did deny that? So it's going to be tough to ask her her reasoning if she's not here.
I'm here in her, to, on her behalf.
Did you make the decision to do that?
I have discussed this with her, yes, sir. And she asked me to, she was out of town last week, and so I took the lead on preparing all the staff reports, as well as the agenda, so I'm very well-versed in the, in the application. She is available by phone if I do need to reach out to her to affirm or have any discussion in addition.
Is this Thompson's?
I believe that the applicant would say yes. I do know that they have other developments that they are proposing, and the outcome of this decision could potentially impact moving forward on their project. I believe Mr. Calloway is here and certainly could speak more to that if you would like to hear from the applicant.
Would you like to move forward?
Okay. Do you want me to proceed with the staff report?
We'll go ahead and
Okay.
There's an appeal, XS 3573, Canal Crossing, lots 5, 6, and 7. Consider appeal for the decision, Community Development Director, with the ID, expedited subdivision request, lots 5, 6, and 7, Canal Crossing, located at 10455 Canal Road. Parcel ID 03-03573, keep serving, David, Calloway, and I.
Thank you. The property is, this is in reference to the final phase of Canal Crossing located on Canal Road. This is an aerial photograph, which obviously was taken a while ago, because it does not reflect any of the current developments on the site. This is looking at the site itself. The upper image is from the access, the existing access road coming into the development, and the lower image is looking back across the subject property towards Canal Road. The applicant has requested a private access easement that is 40 feet in width, and this is not, in an expedited subdivision, staff cannot approve an access easement of 40 feet in width. It would need to be 50 feet in width. Therefore, when the expedited subdivision was presented, it was denied by the community development director. Our subdivision regulations include a provision for the applicant to appeal that decision to the planning commission, and we did receive that request in writing from Mr. Calloway. This particular project, as you may know, this is the last phase of Canal Crossing, and in the past, he was always allowed to use a 40-foot access easement for each of the existing entrances into the development. I cannot speak to how that necessarily occurred in the past, but based on the previous approvals, he therefore planned out the entire development using that 40-foot access easement. When this one came in, Ms. Thompson told him she would not be able to approve it administratively because it did not meet the requirements in the expedited subdivision ordinance. However, he could appeal that to the mainland planning commission. Given the circumstances around this particular project, staff does not, does not disapprove on concept or merit of the 40-foot easement. We simply cannot approve it because it would go against what's in the subdivision regulations. The plat you see here on the screen would be for this access easement coming in off of Canal Crossing, and again, it would be a difference of, the ordinance requires, would require a 50-foot easement, and they are asking for the planning commission to approve the 40-foot easement. Your possible motions are, of course, to approve it, to approve with any modifications, to disapprove, or to defer the application. Staff does recommend to approve the application as presented. I'm happy to go back to the plat, answer any questions you may have.
The, this is commercial use, we need commercial parcel parts of 25
Yes, sir.
50 cent, therefore.
That's the 50. Yes, sir.
And when we do subdivisions, through consent of the county engineer, we can do a 50-foot, do a 40-foot.
Yes, sir.
I understand this is exactly the same thing as an access easement, like perhaps the reductions allow, but that's
And those reductions, as you said, are when you have a street that has curb and gutter, which this would have curb and gutter.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And
Yes, sir.
Then I didn't go back and read that portion of the document. It doesn't say anything about access easements.
Well, and it's, the access easements are tied to the expedited subdivision, so there's, there's lots of different variables that go into which path is pursued, but for this particular project, and in this instance, the expedited subdivision is, is the correct procedural direction. Yes, sir. We simply are limited in being able to approve it at a 40-foot width instead of the 225s, which would make 50.
I've got a question. Did you, I wanted to clarify, did you say that it was actually approved for 40-foot easement previously?
Yes, sir. On several occasions.
And wasn't that by the planning commission?
No, sir. In previous instances, it was approved by the previous community development director. And the applicant can probably speak more to the number of times at which he's gone through this process during the multiple phases of the project. And because this is the very last phase of this project, it's not unreasonable to assume that the approvals he's received for access easements in the past would be continued through the end of this project, and we don't see a detriment to public health, safety, or welfare in granting this access easement. There's multiple access easements to the property, so this is not the primary.
Is it an access easement?
To be maintained by the property owner.
Is there a public care
Yes.
Was there any other reason other than the fact that it was done all in the past, and we want to continue to do it all?
This
Where's the hardship part? This is
The applicant, in meeting with the applicant prior to this, we did have several conversations, and based on the acreage needed for the outpursals, he feels that it would be a hardship because it would eat into that developable area, and I'm sure he can answer those questions more thoroughly, but that is the rationale that he provided during the appeal process. In your staff report, it does state, "The reason for his request is because of the outset, excuse me, outset of our site plan submittals and site plan approval by the Glen County Development Department, easements of 40 feet were incorporated and approved. Our assumption, therefore, in the way in which we configured our future development areas, was that the same specification would be adhered to. Altering that specification now, such as increasing the required width of the easement area, will undermine the design and thus the developability of the balance of the project. So my request of your department simply is to continue the same specifications and standards which were imposed on us from the beginning and which will be the underlying blueprint for the design of the project." And that's from the applicant.
Have we lost the involvement that directly impacted
The, the access, it is a little bit confusing to be, excuse me, to, to follow. The access will actually be for these two lots in the back. These lots up along Canal Road technically have access to Canal Road, so one of the, what would normally be a 25-foot access easement would be to this lot, and the other access easement would be to this lot. And this would be the end of the subdivision within the development.
Well, you did say you want to follow the continued 40-foot easement.
Correct. Yes, sir. We certainly don't want to set a precedent of continuing something that was done incorrectly in the past by any stretch of the imagination, but this is a fairly unique instance in which a sizable development was planned on that previous decision, and the master plan that was submitted initially with this project reflected that as well, so there is precedent in the approval of that master plan for him to be able to carry forward with that 40-foot easement.
Any more questions about that?
Thank you.
Would the applicant please move forward and request action?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, my name's Bobby Shoup. I am the surveyor that prepared the expedited plat that's before you tonight. I have with us here John Calloway and George McDavid, engineer, and so we're, we're here to request approval of this appeal. We feel like it's being consistent with the way that this project was handled in the past. I appreciate that, we don't like asking for, well, I'm gonna call it a variance, but that's not the proper term. This is an appeal of the decision by the director, which correctly says it's not in compliance. There's been four other plats approved by community development prior to the current director using what's called 802, and some of this terminology would be new in that y'all don't typically deal with any of these expedited plats. They're administrative in nature. And so the previous administration was actually going through an 802 process, and in 802, you can have a 40-foot private access easement if it's paved, and if it's not paved, you're required to have a 60-foot private access easement. So in all other four cases, we went through 802, and it was approved by the planning department, but the staff correctly pointed out that this project, because of its zoning, it goes through 801, and in 801, what you have to have is 25-foot access easement, access easement, private access easement for each piece of property. But in the initial design, you could put two together in as much, it's a little tough to have traffic in and out on a 25-foot section, you can do it, but the concept is you could have it 50 feet, and therefore you'd have enough room for travel both ways. So the staff was correct to point out that this had been done incorrectly in the past, but the zoning that has gone by, the planning staff reviewed the rezoning that allowed for this access easement, and it was approved ultimately by the county commission, and it was in anticipation of a 40-foot access way to go through here. So what we're simply asking of you, and we respectfully request, is your approval of this appeal to the decision by the director of community development to allow this project to move forward. We're happy to answer any questions, if you have any for Mr. Calloway or the engineer.
Any questions? Now, there's actually one that goes, let me get my math out, so I can, this access easement actually goes behind a portion of Outlot 5, Outlot 6 completely, and Outlot 7. And if you'll notice there, in Outlot 5, we're matching up to the previously platted access easement, which is 40-foot wide. Basically, nothing more than a driveway, I mean, parking lot access, I can prove.
It's a shopping center, and it's, it's a driveway to get in and out of there, is what it is.
Questions? Are there any? The way we proved the whole, the county's proof, to the source, and Second. Does she read it out?
What was the motion?
Oh, it's just the application approved? Okay. Motion to approve the application, and a second further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to commend direct Thompson for, for doing her job. I mean, that's exactly what she's supposed to do. She's, she's not supposed to vary in that. She, she read it correctly, she did it correctly, so I just want it to be known that this is here because of errors in the past previous to her, so.
All in favor of the application, signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. I will abstain. Any names? Never one, again. Thank you. Site plan approvals. Item number five, SP 3548 Friendly Express. Consider site plan for gas station located at intersection of New Justin Highway, Blythe Island Highway, and Blythe Island Connector. Property is 2.42 acres, located at 4341 New Justin Highway. Parcel ID 03-09156. Chris Amos, CESC Engineering Agent for Lewis and Walerson, owner and applicant.
Thank you. This property is located at the intersection of 341 and Blythe Island Highway. There's currently a vacant Shell Station on the property right now. You see before you the zoning map. I want to point out quickly before moving on, there is a small area of the property that, back in 1980, was rezoned to M6, and while we don't have any concerns that this is in conflict with the current proposal because of the configuration of the site, we do think it would be beneficial to clarify this rezoning, and we'll come back to you next month with a rezoning application for that very small piece. It's 6,000 square feet of the almost two-and-a-half acre site, but we think that will help add clarification and avoid any future concerns about the zoning by going through that process, and that will still be in plenty of time before any final COs or approvals are given for the project. This is an aerial of the property currently. As I mentioned, it's currently a closed service station, so it has been a service station most recently. The image on the top is looking from Highway 341, and the image on the bottom is looking from Blythe Island Highway. The property is almost two-and-a-half acres. It's owned highway commercial, and you can see the lot standards are well met by the application. This is the site plan. All of the notes are included on the site plan, parking, ownership, development information, flood zone information, et cetera. They are proposing to manage their stormwater with an onsite stormwater management pond. There are multiple ingress and egress points to the property. It is somewhat unusual, and it's surrounded by public right-of-way on all sides, so they have access points on all three sides of the property. There will be a service station, I'm sorry, a convenience store located here, as well as 12 gasoline pumps here. They do meet all of their parking requirements. The underground storage tank is located here. They have, again, multiple ingress and egress points around the site. One of the, they do show the buffers on the plan as required by our ordinance. They are asking for an exception to the buffer on this corner here because of the intersection of two state highways, to be able to relocate the planting material in the buffer in that area elsewhere on the site to avoid issues of site problems at that intersection. They do have the dumpster located in the back with the appropriate buffers and screening. And I think that's, those are most of the features of the site. The elevations are shown here. Will be a Friendly Express. And staff recommends approval of the site plan application as presented. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Same none here, that the, a lot of the
They do have the dumpster located in the back with the appropriate buffers and screening. And I think that's, those are most of the features of this site. The elevations are shown here. Will be a Friendly Express. And staff recommends approval of the site plan application as presented. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Same argument that the, a lot of the buffer changes to the buffer when planted elsewhere?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It's, the, the note is in the upper right-hand corner. Well, and we can certainly work with the applicant to, to ensure that any tree species that may have a conflict with overhead power lines is selected to minimize. There, you know, as you know, there are certain tree species that Georgia Power recommends to be planted in close proximity to power lines. So we can certainly work with the applicant on these details.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
So Chris Amos with CESC, here as the agent for the owner. I do have the president of Friendly Express and Brantley Crosby from Lewis &amp; Lawlerston here as well, in case you have any questions for them. We would like some flexibility in these buffer requirements for several reasons, one of which is we're on three state routes. We've got a lot of driveways. We've got site distance issues at all of those intersections. On the 303 side of the property, the 22-foot wide clear zone that's required adjacent to the right travel lane falls, the buffer falls completely inside that clear zone. And we have not yet made submittal to the department for the final driveway permits, but I do know that they're gonna be, they're gonna be scrutinizing anything that we would put inside that clear zone. One other issue that I did speak with the department about on the buffers is the height of the, the type E buffer requires a 36-inch high hedge. And the department doesn't want anything greater than 18 inches high planted where it could block the site distance on any of the drives onto, I'm not exactly sure how we handle that with, with requesting modifications to the buffer here tonight. But I, the department has, has that control over all of those access points. So we certainly have to work with them to, to make that work. They have approved all of the access locations and configurations. We've submitted to them on a preliminary basis and met with them at the site, so all of the access points have been signed off on. And we would like you to approve the site plan as submitted with the buffer modifications that we've discussed. And we do have, we've got power lines on two sides, 303 and 341. On the Blythe Island Connector, I think we've got some flexibility back there with power, but on the other two, it's, it's pretty tight. I agree with that.
Any questions for the applicant?
So Chris, those are state mandated type items, correct?
Yes, sir.
As far, okay.
That's correct.
Not really anything up for a debate. I mean, it needs to be done, and, and it will be done that way. Okay. My question's gonna be, do we need to put that in, just like you asked? Do we need to be putting this in for the approval of this application? Just to follow state guidelines for your-
What we would really like is to have the buffer eliminated. I don't know that we can get you to do that. That would be the, that would be-
That's pushing it.
I have to ask, though.
I was being really nice. I can change.
To allow buffer modifications, yes.
But where's that put you? Does that put you back at, at staff again? I mean, you're gonna have to go back and-
Well, I don't, what I'd like to do, I guess, is to have that, the authority to negotiate these items lay with the staff. And then we can make sure that the trees don't interfere with the power lines, that we don't have any issues with DOT, with site distance or clear zone requirements, and that we then accommodate the buffer. We do have room around that pond if we need to do some planning on that triangle, that we can do some planning in that triangle where Blythe Island Connector and 303 come back together again.
I think the, what muddies that up is the fact that if you go back to staff and we've approved it, you kind of go back with the authority of, well, you know, they approved this. And you really have the upper hand, which is not what we would intend. So it really needs to be the other way around. I mean, I, I think you need to really come back to us and tell us what it is that you want before we approve it. I think we're doing it backwards.
Yes, sir. We have allowed in the past for, when we have instances like this where a buffer requirement cannot be met because of extenuating circumstances, the vegetation to be planted elsewhere on the site. It is certainly up to the planning commission's discretion whether or not you want to allow that to happen at the staff level or if you would like for us to come back with more details on the buffer as proposed.
What we don't want to do is to have the site plan approval deferred. And, and a big part of that is because we can't go forward with any other submittals to the county until we get site plan approval. We can't make building permits, submittals. I can't turn any engineering plans in. They won't do any review at all until the site plan's been approved. So we need to work it out tonight somehow.
Why wasn't this addressed earlier before it came in front of us?
I don't really, to be honest with you, we've just recently gone through another one of these projects. Brantley, when did we do 51? A year and a half ago? We had the very same thing. We're, we got state routes on two sides. We went through site plan approval process. This buffer issue never came up.
17 and 303.
17, no, 17 and 82, yeah. And this buffer issue never came up, so.
When, when Mr. Amos asked for the buffer waiver on the corner, we included that recommendation in our staff report because it was included in the site plan. The mention of waiver requirements due to DOT requirements was not made known to me until today. Therefore, it could not be addressed prior in our staff report.
Let me suggest something, because there are two physical reasons why the buffers might be an issue. One of them is the location of power lines, the proximity of the trees to the power lines. That would be a Georgia Power issue. The other thing would be a DOT issue. Unless it's, if it's okay with, with my clients, we could agree to the buffer as shown, with, with the exception that where it has to be modified because of proximity of trees to power lines or site distance issues with the Department of Transportation, that we accommodate that vegetation somewhere else on site, rather than eliminating it altogether.
Or instead of having a taller vegetation, is all replaced with a shorter shrub type do there?
I think we're okay with that as well. Yes.
Will that still have to go through DOT, though?
The driveway permitting will have to go through DOT, and they'll look at site distance at each intersection. So as long as we've designed it so that it meets the site distance requirements, we should be okay.
Would that be more satisfactory than waiving it altogether?
I'm not sure if the answer to that question, and I'm not, could you ask it again? I'm not quite sure. I understand the question. Would-
Waiving the vegetation altogether?
Waiving the vegetation altogether would, would be, would be what we would like to do. But since we're probably not gonna get that approved, I need to find how we can get there tonight.
I'm just confused as to why, you know, it seems as though that you've got the issue because of the Department of Transportation and Georgia Power, and you're trying to navigate what the county is requiring.
We could plant shorter trees, we could plant smaller trees, we could plant lower hedges. We could replace the taller vegetation with lower vegetation. Obviously, though, we want to be able to see the store from the road. We want to be able to see out of the driveways whenever people are exiting. I think we could find a landscape plan that would accomplish both of those.
The only problem you had was that 22-foot-
That's only, that's on 303.
That's the corner.
Right, okay. Which, then we would be leaving it up to you to find a nice home for those, for the vegetation that would have been in that, that zone?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And the rest would just be lowering thereof? Yeah, but do they total, the total that you need to have for this application? It's one thing to say, "I have a tree planted, so I have a forest," well, you don't.
You want me to go to the one that's more zoomed out? Is that okay?
So we've got that big island. We've, we've got the, the area behind the store. We've got the area, if you notice, out there between the two entrances on 303 or Blythe Island Highway. But then what you can't see is the area to the south.
With the detention pond?
Yes, sir.
This area here?
And of course, we don't, we don't want to obstruct any view, you know, so, we don't want somebody getting killed right there coming out. But there is a substantial area right there that I definitely believe we're gonna be able to satisfy the, I, I, it sure appears to me that the area we have there exceeds the required area in the-
The access on 303 towards 341, that's right turn in, right turn out?
Yes.
And the one just before that is both directions, correct?
Yes.
Full movement.
There'll be people coming in.
I was going through an intersection just the other day, and it was in a neighborhood, but you had to pull out into the oncoming lane just about to be able to see past the vegetation, because they did plant some trees along there. This was a shopping center, actually, up in Athens, that had made a contact, so I pulled out. I would be experiencing a shorter type vegetation, especially around entrances and such like that.
And we wanted to look, I mean, we, we wanted to be, you know, look like the, the best-looking site on that intersection. But, um, yeah, we're, we're, I mean, if we need to, you know, provide a, furnish a landscape plan or something back, I mean, we can do that.
We'll have to do that with the engineering plans anyway.
Yeah, you understand, I mean, what happens is, you know, the next person after you that comes up, next two months now, could very well have something similar to this, and the first thing on his mind is, well, you let them have it, okay? So that's, that's why we do what we do, okay? That's why when the word DOT comes up, they're gonna trump whatever we say to start off with. So, I mean, that's given, all right? We need to lower the plants down. The plants will be lowered down to 18 inches. All right, but as far as the total vegetation that needs to be put on that, that site plan, you're gonna have to do it. It's gonna have to find a home for it somewhere. Okay. And, and that's, and that's the reason why. I think you do, too. Yeah, as a matter of fact, you're gonna make that corner a vastly improved corner in Glen County. And we appreciate what you're doing, because we know that's an investment, and we do appreciate it very much. We just, we, we want to be fair to you and the next guy, okay? And people that came before you. Okay, okay. All right, thank you. And we got Mary over here. She's figured out the whole-
I'll make it. We can make this happen.
She knows how to do the motion.
I make a motion to approve application SP 3576 with the, subject to necessary modifications with, from DOT on the corner of 303 with lowering the vegetation and planning the required vegetation somewhere in the site plan.
Got that, Janet?
What SP number G is? What SP number G is?
SP 35, is that not right?
You said 3548, okay.
No, I said 76, I thought.
It's 3548.
Oh, excuse me. S, SP 3548.
That's why you drug me into this.
Well, I was right, I was busy writing this.
I'm here to help you any way I can.
We got a motion and-
If we satisfy DOT, we've satisfied Georgia Power as well?
Yes. Well, their, Georgia Power will satisfy themselves. They won't allow it. That's exactly that. They're like the Board of Education. They're gonna do as they please. Right, okay.
You got a motion and a second?
Any discussion?